Meeting in order, we have a quorum. Uh, Mr. Jenkins, would you give us our invocation?
Yes, let's pray. Heavenly Father, and that we come to you in the name of Jesus Christ, Lord, and we pray and we ask for your guidance and your wisdom in this meeting. We thank you for this opportunity to live in this county, in this state, in this country, and we pray and ask, Lord, that you would, uh, guide us, allow us to focus on the businesses at hand and do it for the good of the county. In Jesus Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that if it suits the rest of the board, that we move item C, since it will be dealing with the old regulations in front of item B, just so we're not swapping back and forth from the, the new text amendments and the ideas we're coming up with subdivisions, since item C would be, uh, under the old regulations existed before the moratorium began. And do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moves unanimously. All right, approval of minutes of meeting from July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion that we accept as written?
Make a motion.
Do I hear a second? Mr. Bennett? All right, Mr. Bennett with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that was Bowlin first and...
Then Mr. Bennett with the second.
Okay.
All right, our new business case presentation, item number A. I'll take it, well. MA oh-two dash oh-eight dash one-nine dash two-five, a rezoning request for one real estate parcel totaling twenty-nine point one zero acres, located at seventeen ninety-nine Whitner Road, Newberry, to be rezoned from RG General Residential to R-two rural, tax map number three-four-zero dash three-two, or three dash two dash one-one-one.
Yeah, so again, if you didn't hear me, this is what we heard last meeting, but due to, um, an issue with the agenda getting posted online in FOIA regulations, um, we had to hear it again tonight for official minutes. So that's, that's, it's the exact same, um, case that you heard last time, we just got to get it, um, on correct minutes.
All right, I'll take a motion that we accept to be rezoned as written.
Second. Well, I gotta have a motion first. Oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion that we, do I hear a second?
Mr. Bennett with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passed, issued unanimously. Now to our preliminary plat approval for the Farrington development.
I've printed everybody a copy of, um, their preliminary plat. Um, along with this preliminary plat, they submitted all their construction drawings, um, they're housed in our office. It's very thick set of plans, so I was not able to provide that for everybody, but if anybody wants to come through them, they're in our office. Um, but all of the reviewing, um, parties have reviewed it, the engineer has reviewed it, and in fact, it went back and forth between the county engineer and their engineer, um, several times to get in compliance with our current ordinance. Um, but everything is in compliance at this point, preliminary plat, um, meets all regulations, and so it's here tonight for planning commissions every day.
I just have, I have a few questions. The, uh, the dead end on the bottom right, it doesn't need a cul-de-sac turnaround?
That was with the in, very, our, the county engineer and their engineer went back and forth. Um, but we are giving them an exception since they have, um, a secondary entrance.
And...
And it is, um, it is the width of the required emergency, uh, ingress entrance.
Okay. I was just thinking since it was dead end, that it was required under that new chapter ninety-one, was that the right chapter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we're just going, and the other one was under the notes and references? Uh, hold on. I think it is number nine, all water line easements to be dedicated to Newberry County. This includes a ten-foot easement. Would that need to be Newberry County Water and Sewer and not Newberry County? And then... And then I just had a question. Were one spot where they have a proposed five-foot sidewalk inside the fifteen-foot water line easement? That...
Uh, Newberry County Water and Sewer approved it.
Okay. I was just...
Get their own, their, one of our review, um, parties.
All right. That settles mine. Does anyone else have any questions?
If I had to guess, opportunities, but that, that's just a guess.
Uh, what, do you remember the date, whenever this was originally? When the sketch plat came? I think I wrote that down. Uh, it wouldn't have been yet, no, whether it was four. It would have had been before. Must have been January.
The way they working, they be building houses by the end of the week. They got the pads, they got the pads formed up for some of them already, so... Yeah, they, they moved in there with enough equipment to build interstate by, through the county, but, uh, they moved in early and they got it shaped up and his pads already laid out and they came up with roads.
I can't find it, Mr. Shields, I'm sorry. I thought I had it in there, but I didn't see it. All right, anyone else with any questions? Hearing none, I will take motion. Make a motion for, that we approve as presented with the, uh, change of... Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Stanley. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those against, passes unanimously. Onto our third item, which will be text amendment one-five-three dash zero-nine-zero, residential master plan districts.
So I, I gave you a new copy of page two, um, we added some verbiage in there since I mailed the package. So this is just, this is the new page two.
Could, can I ask one question kind of before we get started?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. It's a good bit added to it here, about fifteen percent open area, that's a new paragraph. And then I thought when we left here last week, some of our suggestions was with the, maybe let the wetlands and, and stormwater management be part of that buffer, and then also, this is basically at a hundred feet all the way around it, and I didn't, I kinda didn't think the county was gonna approve a hundred-foot buffer all the way around, and I guess where did this kinda come from?
So I took it from the meeting you, that in the buffer and open space, that y'all did not want stormwater in those. Did I hear that wrong?
I don't think...
I kinda, it's a hundred, it's, it's a lot of area, and I, all of it can be green space all the time, sir, but it's a lot of this, and you start adding it up, which you take a hundred foot all the way around the perimeter of the property. The wetlands and stormwater management is, is not part of that.
This was based on... This was drafted...
Then you have fifteen percent of the open space, what's left for the person to build on?
This is drafted from comments we've heard from Planning Commission and County Councils. So if I have misunderstood anything from those comments, let me know, but I, it was...
No, I think we agreed that in the hundred foot, it could, you know, cross streams and stuff, they didn't have to go back, but I didn't think... I thought we had agreed that that was the only thing that, within the hundred foot, cause I...
I thought it was also brought up that it'd be proportional based off the size of the property.
That was something we said that we would possibly discuss.
But fifteen percent open space, that's new.
It, it's a lot, it's a lot, but that's why we're here, I mean...
That's the take-up for the open space ratio, that it was under the current requirement?
Yes, and there was no, there was no factor in that, you have to have, so the, the open space ratio is you, you have your total land, and then whatever percentage is to put into that ratio, and there's no number there, so there is, you couldn't calculate your open space.
Right.
Does that make sense? So that's why, when talking to the consultant, fifteen percent's a common percentage that other counties have used, so that's why we put it in there, but again, that, that's, we're gonna talk about that percentage when we get through it.
That's over and above the hundred foot all the way around.
Correct.
That's not part of it.
It's over and above.
That would be...
I'm not, it's just, that's a lot of area that's gonna be bu- buffer or open space, and you start adding it up and with perimeters, it's, it is limiting the amount of houses drastically, I, I think, and I, I mean, I, trust me, I'm not advocating it, but it's a, it is a big area that those are two different figures, you take a hundred foot all the way around it, you done got a significant, and then add fifteen on top of it, and then the wetlands has got to be another spot and, and o, and actually open space, and you start taking the streets and roads out of it, I don't know where a house is gonna fit on certain track. And I, I, that was just kinda, I was surprised by seeing the hundred foot all the way around and the fifteen percent additional. And I guess that's kinda my opening s- not statement, but some of this is a little bit added on, and we thought we left it there.
Hmm, and...
I got no problem with it really because of, but, you know...
And I think the, one of the keys for the hundred-foot buffer is because of Newberry's majority R-two, that these properties will be scattered out throughout the county, and this is to mitigate any, to try and cut down on as much infringement of neighboring properties as possible, and then the fifteen percent, I think, you know, just because I think you're pretty aware what's going on out there at Farrington, is they've taken that entire property and took it to a dirt pad. There is nothing left of natural vegetation at all currently, and that's under our old regulations, I mean, that is one hundred percent allowed, what they're doing. And that's why I think that we're looking so hard at these, trying to prevent that in the future, to make it more harmonious with the existing landscape and stuff in Newberry County. And...
I mean, I think the hundred foot's good, you know, it's fine, and that's a...
One question I do have, Katie, is open space and green space used interchangeably?
So if we can, let's go through it, and then I think we'll touch on that, that way we don't miss anything that's in the ordinance, if y'all are good with that. Um, so letter A, nothing changed, was there any questions for, uh, paragraph A? Um, B, again, just explains the uses that are, would be allowed in an RMPD. Um, we kept, of course, the ten contiguous acres as a minimum requirement, um... The, for letter D, number one, number two stayed the same, um, when you get to three, it references the, the buffer, um, section of the zoning ordinance. And so, um, if you go to that ordinance, it says in letter E, that a buffer, it was, may be used for passive recreation. After the meeting we had last week or last month, feedback said y'all didn't want that. So if, if the RMPD was to pass, then that would be a text change that would come before you to change, so that everything is, is uniform. And again, that's where we have the wetlands and the stormwater retention areas may not, um, be included in the buffer areas. Is there any discussion about letter number three? About the hundred foot and then not allowing wetlands and stormwater to be in that?
Natural landscape.
It's protect the, the potentially residents that were already in the area. So a buffer is gonna have to be trees, natural vegetation, your, your, uh, stormwater retention pond would not qualify for that, because you've got to have vegetation within that.
And, and the other thing to that, why not have the stormwater there, is because if you put the stormwater there and then they have overflow from it, it's gonna be right at the property line. So the hundred-foot buffer could actually help as a natural deterrent from erosion on those properties also.
Now, if you wanted to go back to the, our current ordinance, thus under the moratorium, retention ponds were allowed to be calculated within the open space, but I got the feeling from this group that they didn't want that. So we can, we'll address that part when we get to the open space, but as far as included in the hundred-foot buffer, and if you read through the, um, the buffer requirements, anything that is in this section of the ordinance, which is one-fifty-three, one-eighty-two, would be required of the RMPD.
Can we look at that at the conclusion of one-fifty-three RMPD, just to make sure there's nothing we wanna... I haven't, I think I've looked at it all the way, but I'm not sure about as far as the plant types, making sure there's no invasive...
We can.
Cause I know we had talked about having something in there that, you know, dead trees and stuff needed to be removed. All right.
All right, so that brings us down to, um, number four. With the, at least fifteen percent of the total master plan area must be designated as open space and be in conformance with section one-fifty-three point one-eighty-five, required buffer areas should not be counted towards this minimum. Um, so I've included one-fifty-three, one-eighty-five in your packet, um, with some deletions that I felt came from the discussion last meeting, which was, um, the required buffer may be included in the open space, um, and then open space set aside in residential cluster, which we're taking out, but they were allowed to use, um, onsite treatment of state, of stormwater within, uh, their open space. So those are changes staff felt was recommended out of the last meeting.
What land is the stormwater area, they couldn't compute?
Cannot be as, cannot be as, as I took it from last meeting.
And, and I'll be the reason that, uh, I know I'm one of those in favor of them not being, is because if we're looking back and we look, the density can be up to, uh, eight dwellings per acre, there's no yards. So you're gonna have no, little to no pervious soil, it's gonna be rooftops and driveways. And by having that fifteen percent, you know, we're guaranteeing, and also by not having it in the stormwater, it be accessible land for the people residing there that won't really have yards, it could be a playground or something to that effect, you know? So that, that we're gonna allow the density to be extreme, in, in my opinion, but then we're also gonna have it where there is some recreational space onsite, where not the entire development's just houses, driveways and roof, you know, rooftops and asphalt.
And back to your question, open space, green space is the same, so green space should not be listed in here, it should only be open. So if you, if we've missed that, please let me know, but I think it is only open space and...
I just know that we've used green space before, and that's why I asked that question.
We have, we have, we have, but it, it should all be open space.
See, some retention ponds can be built as an amenity to the property, which would be like building a little pond or something like that, that don't drain completely, and that's why, you know, I got no problem with the stormwater retention area being, and then particularly the wetlands being part of the, one or the other, whether it's the buffer or part of the fifteen-foot open space, calling that's kinda laid out. Uh, and I've, I've been involved with projects that had the retention ponds, that it wasn't amenity to the project, but, I mean, like I said, I, I, you just keep adding up, adding up, adding up, the property that can be built on keep getting littler and littler. And I guess that I don't have a real personal problem with that, but whoever's having to meet all this, it just, you, I don't, it gets tough for them to keep adding it up, cause certain properties may not even be able to be built on if it's ten acres, if you drop a hundred foot around it and take the others out, and all this keeps adding up, but carry, that was, that was, that's fine with me.
Well, I mean, and, and one thing I've heard counsel since I attended all their meetings is that they want the LDR and the development to be where they can control where these developments are. They don't want them on every property, they wanna be able to space them throughout the county to try and mitigate what's currently occurring in our neighboring counties and stuff like that, and I think that's why these are a little bit more constru- restrictive right now, but it does conform to what some of these other counties have gone to now after the fact.
So as a planning commission group, what's the consensus on the fifteen percent? Are we keeping it, lowering it?
I like it.
I like it.
Good?
That's fifteen percent on top of the hundred.
Correct.
Not, not counting the wetlands.
Correct.
Correct.
All right. So, um...
And I think one thing is, if, if the property does have a lot of wetlands, it shouldn't be suitable for residential development, because then you're gonna have issues with flooding your neighboring landowners and stuff, so, I mean...
Okay, was there, before we go to page two, was there any other comments anybody wanted to talk about on page one? All right, so on page two, um, number two, this was, um, a recommendation from Ms. Ann, and it was a, a great one. We have gone through and changed, um, applicant, anything that was applicant, applicant or developer has now completely been changed to developer, that way it's much clearer, um, and also corrected some of the planning commission verbiage, so that's the, the changes, that's in, um, number two. And that's, um, of course, explaining the process for applying for, uh, the amendment. Nothing changed in number three or number four. All right, number five was the discussion of how do we determine what's a minor change versus what's a, a major change? Um, and after talking to our consultant, I think it was agreed upon that, you know, what I think's minor versus what the board may consider major would be very...
Subjective.
Subjective, so to, to make that completely not an issue, you guys and council will, will approve any and all changes.
Take a little work off your plate.
That's right. Um, so that's, that's how we address number five. Any, everybody good with that change? Okay, going down to number six, um... We just, Newberry County, we just changed up the, the verbiage of, um, chapter one-fifty-four, and what we did do was add that RMPD shall follow all actual development requirements set forth in chapter one-fifty-four subdivision requirements. And the reason we put that verbiage in there was Ms., uh, Ann said, well, hey, once they get through sketch, like, what happens? So we wanted to make it clear that once sketch plat is approved, any cha, any, you know, changes that Planning Commission, County Council wants to add, have them add, once that sketch plat has been approved, then they, they jump over to the, the requirements of the LDR, the one-fifty-four. So they'd have to follow all the requirements of preliminary plat, and that's why I included all this in your packets. They'd have to meet all the requirements of a preliminary plat, and then if they, uh, chose to, um, try to, so once preliminary construction plat is approved by Planning Commission and council, then they are allowed, as in Farrington, to start putting in the water lines, grading, doing any kind of infrastructure work. Um, some developers like to sell a lot or two to make revenue to keep, um, doing the infrastructure, so they, they put down a bonded plat, which means they have to provide the county with the bond for the amount of money that it would take to completely finish out all infrastructure and roads. Um, and that's the bonded plat requirements thus in the packet, so they would have this option if approved by Planning Commission and council, then... Our friend.
Is that the microphone or the camera?
And then once, um, all, if they choose to do a bonded plat, once all the infrastructure done, all that good stuff, then they jump over to final, um, so that's why I wanted to include all of this, because it, it wasn't clear in the original of, hey, what do I do after, after sketch plat is approved? You do have to follow the following requirements of section one-fifty-four. Any questions on that change or addition?
That's only for the procedure of plats and all that stuff, basically.
Yes, well, it'll be, um, so when they are comfortable that they've met all of these requirements on paper, and it's been submitted to myself and the review team, so the school district, the Newberry County Waters, or electric provider, then that comes to, to y'all like it did tonight for Farrington, and then because it's an RMPD, it will also go to County Council.
Okay.
And if they choose not to do a bonded final, that's, that's okay, they don't, that step is a development choice. You know, some wanna just go ahead and do all the infrastructure, get the roads in and then sell, but some want to start getting some revenue in to help cover costs.
There's no need to put the little caveat that we throw in there a lot of times, that the most restrictive will be followed, because that wouldn't...
We can add it, but this, this would be the most restrictive.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was...
Um, and then number seven, we changed site, I'm not sure what it was, but it made it more uniform to flow better throughout the ordinance. Um, so number... Still in number seven, um, grammatical we added instead of proper written, properly written, application has been filed for each extension, so if, going back to our discussion last meeting, um, when, if they need an, an extension of the time that was agreed on upon, um, the first initial site plan meeting, if they need an extension, they have to apply for each extension, and that would go to Planning Commission, um, to accept or to void.
All right, this is one thing that I think we agreed last time, that we wanted to look at and talk a little bit more about. So as this is written, they have two years to finish, and then we can give them one-year extensions, is that how it's written?
Correct. Or, or agreed upon early on, so if they come to you and they have a hundred acres and they know upfront that it's not a two-year build-out, then that, those, that, that is...
Okay, so there is a caveat that we can give a special exemption?
There is, that it, yes, yes, yes.
Cause that's, I mean, we, we want them to begin work as soon as possible and do it, but we don't want them also to do hastily work and not get a good quality.
Yes.
And, and that was my concern with...
Yes, and that is addressed... Um, it's in here, but that, that is, they can, i- i- if, you know, if it's a hundred acres versus ten, of course, they're gonna have to have...
I think even on, on a ten, two years from approval to completion of project...
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, it's right here in number seven, the final approved site plan for an RMPD shall be in the effect for a period of two years or other development schedule as specified in the RMPD, so they, they have their...
As long as that's in there.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know, we talked about that. What did we talk about that?
Okay, and then going down to the development standards, the only change we made was we had J, open recreation and common area. Because we didn't have definitions for recreation, common area, we, we put it all to open space. That way we have the definition and the requirements all listed out. Skipping over, um, to number two, under the development standards, um, we added in the, on the landscape plan, they must identify the delineated flood plans and also, um, show and keep all natural drains open. And then the last change we made, um, was number three had, the statement was a general structure detailed outlining the typical elevations of the types of buildings with architectural details. Structural and development design is strongly encouraged to follow the guidelines set forth in the Newbury County Residential Design Guide line. We do not have a design guideline and we have decided not to try to create that. So what they'll do is they'll submit a portfolio during that initial, um, meeting. That will show the types of houses exterior, are they gonna be brick or are they gonna be hardy board or are they gonna be vinyl or log cabin, whatever? That will be agreed upon early on instead of creating a, um, design book. Okay? So that's the changes, um, that we've made thus far. Is there any discussion of any other changes or deletions?
Anybody else got anything? Hearing none, I'll take a motion that we accept this as changed and, well, I mean, we didn't make any changes tonight.
No, that you, you approved the changes.
Previously changed.
I'll make the motion.
Make motion accepted as written. Do I hear a second? Second, Mr. Bennett, all those in favor? Those against? Motion passes unanimously.
Alright, Tyler, you wanna go through the individual?
Yeah, let's just look at the buffer and open space, since we're gonna be using those to make sure we don't have, and since you already have us with the.
Yep, so we'll, we'll look at buffers first. Again, the only suggested change, um, that I made was that it may not be used for passive recreation. Um, if reading through y'all found any other suggested changes, again, um, my opinion or recommendation would be not to vote on this, to go to county council with the changes until we know their stance on the RMPD. Um, we don't need to do a lot of text changes and then have to redo them or undo them. So we can discuss it, just know that this is more of a discussion for future.
The only real thing I thought about with the buffers is when we were talking about trees that, that are dead and stuff and having in there where they can be removed and replaced. And I don't know if, I didn't know off the top of my head if that's in here. And that's why I wanted to look over it, because, I mean, we don't, we want to require the buffer, but we don't want the buffer to become A, a fire hazard and B, a safety hazard.
What is passive recreation, just walking on it?
Yes, walking tracks.
But a definitely kind of a structure, not just.
Not a, it would be more of like a side, like a paved sidewalk or not just a little foot trail. Um, so I'm gonna make a note about the, the dying of trees and then replanting.
Mr. Stanley said probably put that in F.
Yep, 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 it'd go in F.
And I don't, do we need to put anything in there about no in- invasive species or anything like that? Or is that covered under the landscape?
It is in the landscape. Did I include landscape in y'all's packet?
Uh, I don't believe so, I just, I looked over.
It's in landscape and I should have included that in your packet and I did not, but yes, it is.
That's, that's just another thing I thought of.
Cheryl and I made that change and, um, so, but yes, it's, it's in, it's in the landscape.
Does anyone else have any suggestions of anything we may need to look at under buffers?
We'll move on to open space. Um, one change, no matter what the outcome of the RMPD will be, is, um, I believe cluster development goes before. I think it's first reading tomorrow, next week, I believe. So, once county council has the third and final reading for cluster, anything that is cluster mentioned in the current zoning order will, will come out if council decides to, um, delete cluster from our, our ordinance. So that's one strike and we added in master plan districts, if, if that would, um, pass. Um, and then number two that we took out was required buffers may be included in open space if held in common ownership. Um, we took that out. And number B, um, if the fifteen percent is good with everybody, we'll put open space requirement shall be calculated using the open space ratio, ratio of at least fifteen percent. Because your, that, that piece of the ratio was missing in, in the ordinance.
And this, this was why I was making quite the issue of it, because it was in here. And this is a significant difference in the area that's gonna be buffer, open space and.
You were talking about the open space ratio?
Yeah, well, the open space, this was in here and it got, I had noticed red and stuff and it was struck out. And I guess somebody got to realize that is a significant difference in the open space buffer, whatever. So I, I guess that's why I was trying, and I really, I got no problem with it, other than that is significantly difference on the developmental area and I hope.
Well, that, that was, uh, I had asked Katie what the open space ratio was and she had told me that is hard to interpret and understand because, and so.
The, the, the missing, we didn't have a number to, to input into our, our calculation.
Number there.
But take, but take, well, but taking the buffers out and taking the stormwater, you, you, it's a significant increase in area.
In undeveloped land, that's correct.
Right, and that's, that's was my point, not the fifteen percent. But those were changes in a current stuff that's gonna be a significant, uh, on restriction or on what can be developed on that.
I understand.
Um, again, we took out, uh, letter G that, um, the onsite treatment of stormwater could not be included in open space requirements. And that was the changes for open space.
Uh, uh, and just to me, one of the reasons I like that being called open space, it takes up for if you were to say, cause I know one thing we struck it out, I think, was in the previous, was it maybe the LDR went impervious soils and stuff like that? And that would kind of cover it without taking it to that level. Because when you start talking about pervious and impervious, if you leave it naturally open, you know it's one. Any other questions?
I just have one. On, um, so like on one, on C, you say open space may include recreational areas, right? And then on three, we say, you know, high maintenance, you know, cross facilities, you know, like bicycle paths, you know, bridges and that type of thing. I mean, I, I would wanna have that included, because I wanna encourage that, somebody to use their fifteen percent for recreational type of things. I mean, whereas, you know, to, you know, Mike's comment earlier, um, you know, we're, we're still restricted, restricted, restricted. I mean, does this encourage them to, you know, put these types of bike paths and what have you? Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the.
I think that's.
We have one, it's, it's almost, like one time we say, you know, it could be included, but you know, the bike path or something, I wouldn't think that's more, that's a recreational type of thing. But they encourage that, if they could put that in there, that's in fifteen percent. Or in the, you know, open space.
So bike paths would not? I'm not opposed to that. I mean, I don't have a problem like bike path stuff, cause you're still having the natural. I mean, I can understand where the swimming pools and stuff like that, you, you start looking at, you're, that's not natural landscaping, that's.
But that, I mean, you, you know, if the guys, if they say, okay, well, that's not gonna be included, and I'm gonna use that as plan, but if I can include that, you know, maybe it would, maybe it would.
Or is that, or, or is it just bridges? If you read three, it says bridges along pedestrian and bicycle paths. So it wouldn't be pedestrian and bicycle path, it would just be the bridges used on them. And then I think that would be because especially if you, well, let's see, does it say?
Would a bike path then be considered in the open space?
It would, I think it's, I think it's talking about like if you have a, alright, a s- a retention, stormwater retention pond that they, they don't, they put fish in for whatever reason. And you're, you're not, and your path goes up to it, then you're gonna cross it. The path and the path on either side can be counted, but the physical wooden bridge or whatever would not. I, is how I interpret that. But I can get further interpretation, um, for that.
When I think bridge, I'm thinking stream bed, water, something like that. So I'm like, that's not gonna be included already, so there's no point.
But I would agree, us, you know, a bike path or a playground or something like that would definitely be open space.
The development of my, my one daughters, and I mean, they have a, it's a bike path and there is a bridge. So I mean, then we, then, you know, it goes over a little stream or something.
Yeah, I think that would fall under the recreational areas.
Yeah, but then.
But we, I mean.
I'll, I'll get some clarification on, on that, cause like I said, we've got time to tweak this.
Yeah, because we don't wanna vote on this until after.
We don't wanna vote on any of this and then.
Yeah, that was just, I was seeing a little.
But I will definitely get some clarification on that. And what I'll do is I'll email the clarification and then, once we get, if this needs to come back to y'all for recommendation to county council, we'll all know what the, um, clarification is and, and be thinking of what you wanna change it.
At least, at least we've already discussed it, rather than coming in at the next meeting and having to. You know, Mr. Mike, I know you, just to clarify, you had some concerns with the buffers. It was brought up in the last county work session by county council that they wanted the hundred foot buffer or a buffer of similar size and stuff on all subdivisions, not just this one. They're looking at it for all.
I, I really don't have a problem, it's just that look like that, cause it included as part of the open space.
Yes.
I, I, I don't have a problem with the buffer and the stormwater and, and onsite treatment being all part of the open space. You putting fifteen percent on top of a hundred percent or a hundred foot around it, you done got into a bunch of area.
And, and I think the biggest.
So I'm, I, that's the part, and I, I said, I, I'd rather it all be a hundred percent open space. But you, you done got to where you really cutting down if you can't use that, that hundred foot as part of your open space. Uh, and it was already in here, that's why I made such issue that, that, those two requirements are substantially different and additional area that's gonna be undeveloped. Like I said, I, I, I'm afraid once it kind of gets further in the process, when people start taking a map and drawing it on there, somebody's gonna say that's awful lot of area that's gonna be encumbered or un- unencumbered or whatever.
Uh, I think the biggest reason is kind of why we looked at the difference between buffers and open space, because we don't want the buffers to become open space, because then it would defeat the purpose of a buffer mitigating, you know, infringement upon the neighboring landowners.
But the open space is a buffer, the buffer is open space. And I don't, however council and y'all wish to proceed, I don't have a problem with it, other than those were two significant changes in the restrictions on any development, that somebody needs to, you know, maybe do the math on or something and, uh, when it was already in there before, yes, too, so. What kind of other blowback you have by other people, but. That's why I'm just calling it to attention that it was there and it, that is significant. That is significant, uh, change.
Let's, what would? Square footage, just for, Mr. Mike, you know off the top of your head, square footage per acre is two?
Forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty.
Forty-three, five hundred.
Per acre, I, I did that a lot.
Um, ten acres, so you're looking at four hundred and thirty-five, sixty? Alright. Equals, make it a link, divide by length, just if you turn it into a square, it would have a side of.
Just take your, just take your total and then go, just take the forty-six, four hundred, whatever that number was.
Yeah.
And do fifteen percent.
But if you're gonna get the hundred.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what the hundred foot buffer would take off of, what would be?
Oh.
Divide that by four.
Divide this by, what the heck did I do there? Alright, divide by four, be a hundred and eight thousand nine hundred. And so we just subtract a hundred from that.
Now that would be your, that would be your square footage that you taken out, right?
No, that would just be a quarter.
He was squaring it, so that would.
No, that, I did.
What's your, uh, main number, forty-six?
Forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square foot. And then if you do a ten acre, which this has to be a minimum ten acres, it'll be four hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred square foot.
And you're trying to just make it a square.
Yep, just to try and do the easiest way to figure out how much it won't be, you know, in a theoretical. Cause there's not too many cookie cutter square tracks in Newbury County. We're just trying to figure out where we're looking at, what, what that hundred foot buffer's gonna take out. Alright, what was it, four, three, five, six there, length times width. He's, he's the engineer, he's smarter than the rest of us.
Anybody got a square root on the calculator?
Uh, I think so.
But that takes four thou- four hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and put square root, and what's that get dimension?
Oh, that wasn't right. Ooh, look at that, square root, oh, I gotta do it before I do it. So do square root. Square root of forty-three.
I'm just trying to make it, easiest way is make it a pure square.
Or the easy.
Six hundred and sixty.
Six hundred and sixty.
Send you an example tomorrow.
Yeah.
Maybe you have to be timed ten for a ten acre, so six thousand.
So six thousand six hundred?
Yeah, multiply that by four and then multiply it by a hundred and then divide it by forty-three, five.
About sixty-five acres. About sixty-five acres.
It's only a ten acre lawn.
Uh-uh, no.
I tell you what, it's been a long time since math, I haven't had the square footage. Do we have anyone at the county that can figure out what percentage?
I will, I can do it on my computer tomorrow and email everyone, how about that?
Cause I, I think math has been determined not to be the strong point. I got the.
I will do an example where shows the land, shows the setbacks and I'll.
I don't think it's gonna be as much as people are thinking it is, that's what.
Well, that's, that's a square footage, but then you had to get, I was trying to make it just a pure square. And, um.
We're gonna take on sixteen from each.
If you got, if you got a square.
Yeah.
Why are you basing that on ten acres?
A hundred foot all, all the way in.
Yeah.
This is whatever it was gonna be. Then once you, once you determine.
But that's a house like forty-three.
Then determine the, the amount of square foot is that, that, the hundred.
This math was if.
That hundred foot buffer is gonna take, then what you got fifteen percent.
What'd you do, Google that?
Nah, ain't I.
Uh, calculate the side length of the square lot, one acre. So that would be six hundred and sixty, like Mr. Mike said. The buffer is a hundred feet wide along the perimeter side. So the area is reduced by a hundred foot on each side is two hundred, be four hundred and sixty. Calculate the buffer.
Came up with five point one four acres.
I don't see how that's possible. For ten? Yeah, it couldn't, it couldn't take half of it. One acre, so ten acres. So it's six hundred and sixty. See, that's, I was trying to do just a simple length and width.
See where you got us off to?
I know.
I'll, 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 I'll email it tomorrow.
You'll be thinking about it all night.
Oh, I, I'm.
I'll figure.
I'm gonna go home and call Miss Lucie Anne.
I, if I had a square root on there, we'd be done with it.
Yeah.
I can't.
Miss Lucie Anne, the math whiz. All right. Do we have any other questions or has anyone here looked at any zoning ordinances they would like us to look at? I mean, I know I looked at some, but I'm not. I'd like to, if we could, I just bring them and talk with you about them and then if we need to, then we can get the stuff together.
What are the sections? That way I can pull them.
Uh, I'd have to go through it.
Just just email me the sections and then I'll have them ready when you come.
All right. Cause some of it has nothing to do with moratorium, because I know we had talked about going through and updating the zoning ordinances.
While we're doing all the text amendments, we needed, it would be helpful to do it all at once.
And so I had other things that were. All right.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I wanted to say, it really didn't have anything with this per se, but I know all of us got our uh new assessments and property values and uh my opinion is, you know, you have to, you worked all your life to pay for your house and you still gotta rent it from the county the rest of your life. But I think where it's gonna be a negative effect on this county is what we talked about here, green space and open area. All of us that's farmed for forty and fifty years have inherited type land or bought land with the idea of producing a commodity off that property that pays for the land. I have gotten, and I'm sure all of us here, on on land that I've owned forty-five years and my family's on fifty years. I got in the market value of four times what it used to be. And if the county sends me a tax bill on on that at four times, it's no incentive for me to keep it anymore. The only way I can realize this new values if I sell it.
Yeah.
I don't want to, nobody wants to, but that that's the thing there. I don't quite understand it and and.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if you get the ag break.
Right.
Your tax. The only change, you, if if you, if your land is taxed as ag, so you pay the very minimum, the tax bill that you got for this year will be the exact amount of money you pay next year. Am I correct?
Ag taxes should not change under the reassessment, because ag taxes are mandated by the state. Now, what Mr. Mike's talking about, the new fair market value will never be attain- obtainable by the current property owner unless they sell. And by doing that, and if they change anything, then it's no longer in ag. It would go back to taxes on the new fair market value. Is that what you were trying to?
Right, but as long as I don't get a bill for a new fair market value.
But again, I'm not, that's out of my department.
And I got, but, you know, that's gonna be, you start getting a bill more than you, the commodity you can produce and we, when I bought my land and my family bought it, it was to grow a commodity, soybeans, wheat. Or now, my case, now all mine's in timberland, but uh if I get taxed out of it, then it can grow houses, I guess, and I'm certainly not planning on doing that. And some of the offers I've got on couple pieces, I'm probably foolish sitting here not taking it.
Just because I've.
Planning on it.
I've done my fair amount of research on this since we received our reassessments. Your tax value is capped at a fifteen percent increase if you have previously owned it during a previous reassessment.
Right.
Unless, now there's the caveat that if you've made major additions, remodeling, or in the instance of ag, if you have changed the land usage, it can change. But the the ag taxes still revert back to the state, the county doesn't set them. The, also the state requires the county to roll back the millage rate so that they do not take in more taxes than they previously did. But if you were in the previous reassessment, then it goes to the new fair market value and they're able to capitalize on those gains. So anyone that purchased property in the last five years will get a tax bill at that fair market value. And there's a lot of stuff how it changes and they actually will go back and change each individual property owner's taxes because they look at what was the average property change for the county? If your property changed greater than fifty percent, then your property, that's just on the taxable value, not the fair market value. But if yours changed greater, then they'll actually increase your taxes while other peoples will be rolled back. Then what you're talking about with selling it, then the ca- the state and the county will do a three-year rollback and they'll be required to pay the taxes on the new fair market value from the previous three years.
How does it affect people that are like versus me, where we got a new building, your property taxes is in escrow?
That.
With any mortgage?
Yeah.
Your mortgage, your mortgage paper go up?
Yeah, but it depends on wh- when.
My opinion is you need to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Talk about it.
Yeah, all right. Hearing none other, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Ms. Shields gonna have a second. And Mr. Bowlin, all those in favor?